It's a great evening. Beautiful day and a lot of new things are beginning, for sure. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
Eight council members present.
Very good, thank you. If you will rise with me, Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us again this evening to lead us in our embracation and if you'd take a right on his pledge, we'd appreciate it.
Honored to do that, sir. Heavenly Father, what can I say for such a beautiful day as you've given us to live here in the heartland of America? It's a reminder, Lord, that winter has finally ceased and we're into the spring and planting season. As we make our plans and move forward as a community, we do it with the help and devoted guidance of public servants. Tonight, I especially want to thank you, Lord, for those that have served this city faithfully. Mayor Benton, Mr. Vaughn, and Mr. Shyland are moving out of their offices and we're bringing in newly-elected servants to this city. I thank you for those that served with diligence, integrity, and for those that are coming in, I pray, Lord, for each position, that they'll be filled with hearts that love this community and desire to serve it with joy in their hearts. I pray that you'll continue to bless Mayor Benton, Mr. Shyland, Mr. Vaughn with good health and prosperity, that they can enjoy these years following their service to our city. I pray, Lord, in addition, for Mr. Moore, Chief Myers, Chief Kofelt, and his mother, Pat, and all others that are part of the city family who need your daily maintenance and physical care. We ask you to bless this session tonight, which will include the swearing-in of our new servants. I pray, Lord, for the business that will follow, the discussions held, and the decisions made, that they'll be pleasing to you. I want us, Lord, to, in the closing of this prayer, to have a moment of silence for a Marine and two special ops that were killed in Afghanistan yesterday, serving this great country. In addition, Lord, I pray for our police officers, firefighters, first responders in our local community. The weather's broken and outdoor activities will increase. Graduations will soon come and summer activities will be everywhere. Bless our public safety officers as they keep our community safe. Watch over us and guide us. We all pray this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Place the flag. Mission, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clerk.
Praise it, sir.
Thank you, Clerk.
Thank you, Jim, thank you. At the beginning of each council meeting, we set a time aside for visitors who would like to address the council about a concern that they have within the city and are something positive. And really, so, all we do is ask that you give us your name and your address and limit your comments to five minutes, of which the clerk will time you on that and help you eliminate that amount of time. So at this time, I invite anyone that's visiting this evening who would like to address the council to please come forward at this time. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on with our agenda. Thank you. Our next item is the presentation and approval of council meeting minutes of March 26th. Those are in your packet, and again, are there any addendums or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thanks. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve council minutes of March the 26th. Any further discussion of that motion? Question? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Yes is having. Well now, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution number 3335 certifies the municipal election that was held on April the 2nd. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present resolution number 3335?
A resolution number 3335, a resolution certifying the votes cast in the municipal election on April 2nd, 2019. I make a motion to adopt resolution 3335 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 3335. Any discussion or questions on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is having. Thank you. That election is now certified. Okay, we'll move on. I believe Councilman Simmons has a ward or a moment that he'd like to present, and I'll give him a couple minutes, and while he's doing that, I'm going to move into the podium.
Yep. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna stand up here.
All right.
Mr. Shyland, you have been Ward 1's representative for a long time, a very long time. And you've done a great job representing the citizens of Ward 1. So we decided we needed to come up with some recognition of that service. But we really didn't know what to do. We didn't just want to toss a hat on something and call it good. We wanted it to be meaningful. So I went through the archives of the city, an extensive research that lasted probably a minute or two, and came up with something that was really surprising. A long time ago, the city had developed an award that was considered extremely prestigious. It was given to long-serving council persons who were considered to be excellent in their job. Matter of fact, this award looks like was so prestigious and so rare that I doubt anybody in this chamber even remembers it being given out. So, may I have the nondescript box, please? Just the box. Mr. Shyland, for your longstanding, you don't need to get up. For your longstanding service to Ward 1 and the rest of the city, I wish to present you with the illustrious Golden Coat Rack Award. May you cherish this in the same vein that it's been given.
I'll walk all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Simmons. I just wanted to take a minute and come down here so I could see you all. We've had a great eight years, and we've worked together. We haven't always agreed, but we respected each other, and I think we have done a pretty decent job for the city of Fulton. It's been a real privilege to be associated with you, and I just want to stand here and thank each and every one of you for your service and cooperation and the support that you've given me and your council. A couple of you, and of course, that also goes for the state. I don't want to leave them out. You know, these kinds of things, it's just hard to hit everybody because, you know, after eight years, I've had so much help from so many folks, and advice, et cetera, that it's hard to thank everyone. Anyway, I'm very appreciative. I did, two of you are leaving with me, and I did want to recognize or give you a little token of my appreciation. And with that, and like I say, I just want to say thank you, and I think it's now time for recess of the council. We'll recess, and the new council will please come up, and they'll take their pictures, and then you'll convene and finish up the evening. Thank you.
We'll now call this meeting in order. Madam Clerk, please read the roll call.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Seabacher.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Braun.
Present.
Eight council members present.
So each year, the council adopts a list of rules and procedures for our meetings. You've received a copy of the proposed procedures for the upcoming year in your packet. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes?
There have not.
Okay, so, we can have discussion now if anybody has anything to add or remove or change. I do have one comment on this. I've noticed in the recent packets that I've been getting that we're not doing the director's report. And for me, that was helpful. Some of the new council members might find it pretty helpful. So if we wanted to go back to doing that, we could do it. Now would probably be the time to make that change. But that's totally up to you guys.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Again, I didn't understand. I missed, I didn't hear you down here. I'm sorry.
So you remember the director's report we would get?
Yes, yes.
Each month? So I noticed we weren't getting that anymore, so I had missed. I've really got a lot out of that.
Yes, I did too.
But that could be changed. We could go back towards that if we choose to.
Yeah, I would like to change it. That's my opinion.
Would that be something that we consider inside that consent agenda? Do we just receive the report and be able to review it?
I believe so.
So currently, the director of administration report is in the consent agenda, so it isn't necessarily making an amendment to the rules or the procedures, but it was just a decision, I believe, a couple years ago by the council to shorten that report. If you guys want to go back to the way it was with the full report from each department, that's really something we could do very easily.
I know, I liked getting those.
I did too. I feel like we're a little more informed, myself.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That's probably my fault. I was the one that kept complaining about, all I wanted was the highlights which was currently working, projection time.
Gotcha.
I felt like it was eighty, it was getting up to eighty and ninety pages, just stuff with material to make me read.
Right, right.
So I was just, yeah, so what they was giving was down just to what they was currently working, the projects we was at the current time.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But I'll go along with whatever you want to do with the rest of the council.
So we would need a motion?
Do we need a 90-minute report?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the council rules of order and procedure.
Second. Is there any more discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, would it make sense for us, for council concerns, sometimes we cover that just before resolutions and ordinances, to move it up earlier in case there would be a time or to maybe address earlier on?
That someone may have to leave early, or is that what you're getting at?
Well, that we, whether it's somebody, one of the department heads, or a question that somebody might have, and the answer, and could be answered maybe later on in the meeting if we have that question.
I think that is fine. Might help at times.
Does anyone feel like they want to go back to the agenda?
I don't know how far up we'd move it though, because if you start looking, do you mean after the consent agenda or right before the consent agenda?
Excuse me.
I don't know. It might be fine. I don't know where to move it.
Yeah, that's pretty quick in the agenda, in the meeting, so.
That does come up pretty quickly.
I would point out too, that it seems like historically, it's been there because when we do have people that come to the meetings, we try not to make them sit and wait very long. And I feel like if we add a lot of things before their time to speak... And I feel like if we add a lot of things before their time to speak, you know, we have them sitting here for a little while. But again, whatever you guys think.
Scratch what I said, Courtney.
We play with it over a couple of meetings and see what works and what doesn't.
Definitely, definitely. And I would point out, even if you guys do choose to adopt this tonight, we can still amend it at any time. It's not concrete. Mayor Canel, you do have a motion and a second on the floor to approve them, as for example.
Okay, we can always change.
So if there's no more discussion, we'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, that passes. Moving on, number four. Each year, the council appoints a deputy mayor to act in the absence of the mayor. I'll open the floor now for nominations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Rick Shiverdecker, please. Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Or do we do that?
Mr. Mayor?
Or do we just take the nomination?
I move we close nominations.
There you go.
That solves that.
Solves that.
So I have a motion to appoint Rick Shiverdecker as deputy mayor by acclamation. Is there any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Rick Shiverdecker, you're the mayor.
Overruled, correct?
Thank you very much, Rick. I'll try not to worry you out.
Now, I would point out that our public hearings are scheduled for seven fifteen. And since we're not quite there yet, just in case someone is planning on coming in, we should probably move on to the next item and we can go back to those.
Okay.
Okay.
So that puts us on page three. Okay, approval of the consent agenda. So we have the consent agenda on the table. Are there any concerns or need to amend the agenda?
I'd say just for everyone out there, just in case someone's watching, on tonight's consent agenda, we have the approval of your request from Mark Bolton on behalf of Westminster College for a five K fundraiser on Saturday, April thirteenth, from eight thirty AM to twelve noon. And that is our only item tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Isn't this a little soon? Like, quick?
Yes. It's the Saturday. It had already been kind of approved by everybody, but it had not come before us before.
Okay.
And then just as an advertisement, the fundraiser is for a veterans memorial on the campus of Westminster College of those alumni or they were students at the time who went off to serve and passed during wartime, whether it was World War One or World War Two. It's a great cause if anybody has opportunity to donate to the cause.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. So if there's no more discussion, we'll call the question. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no? New business? We have no new business for tonight. We have enough new stuff going on, I guess. So we'll move on to council concerns. And I'll start to the right here with Mr. Shiverdecker.
Yeah, the only thing, I wasn't here at the last meeting. And I know we had added the discussion for terms and petition signups for, to be discussed. And I would like to have that added back to the meeting for the next one.
Yeah, I think Mr. Benton wanted that to be the new folks on board with that discussion, so, yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
I have two, sir. The first one is really old, but since we didn't do anything for that. Just a quick, not a long story of Mr. Johnson, you either one might know. I had a couple of questions from people about the house on Sixth Street. What is our status with that?
As far as the structure, we are scheduled to go to trial in May. We haven't got a date. Mr. Riley said the court docket is pretty full, so that's why I got pushed off into May. We went to court last Tuesday on the outside of the property. The judge found him guilty, issued a fine. Mr. Steiner recommended that we monitor the property. He has made some progress. If it doesn't continue to progress, then we'll issue another citation.
Thank you. And my second one was, was not necessarily, I read the article in this morning's paper about the five K run. If we wanted to do it as a council, or if we have anything left in the Rick Shiverdecker fund, we might, the city might donate five hundred dollars to that cause because of those seven kids. And one of the, I think two of those people were Phaetonians in there that passed away during the war, so. But I thought it was quite interesting that seven youth would take that on as a project. It's just a thought for discussion next council meeting, not tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Yes, I just have a quick question. Maybe I'm just a little out of the loop on things. With the grading that's going on on Fourth Street, is that going to help take care of the problem between the curb and the road on Westminster and Fourth?
Yes.
Okay, because that's been a nightmare for a while.
They did the...
Trying to turn onto that road.
The contract has been in town for the past two days. They milled out beginning yesterday. They have the milling done today. The schedule is that tomorrow morning, they'll begin laying that new asphalt.
Okay, good.
So by this time tomorrow, they'll be done barring a mechanical breakdown.
Great, thank you.
Now, I think even though that was a pain dealing with that, if they would have tried to fill that in with aggregate, it would have been a real chore to get that back out then to relay.
Just kind of wanted to get an update on an end date on that.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mrs. Pace Snook. Mr. Braun?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Stone?
I'm good this evening, as you can imagine.
Mr. Clay?
I just want to welcome everyone, our new, and I feel optimistic that we'll all work together and swap. That's all I have tonight.
Go team.
You bet.
Mr. Simmons?
No items.
All right, and Ms. Seabacher?
I have nothing.
Am I saying that right?
Seabacher, yes.
Okay. Fantastic.
Okay.
Okay, so we're to resolutions. Councilman Simmons, please present resolution number thirty-three thirty-six.
Yes, sir. Resolution number thirty-three thirty-six. Whereas Wayne Shilin has ably and conscientiously served the city of Fulton, Missouri as city councilman of the first ward from April nine nineteen ninety-six to April eleven two thousand, and again from April fourteen two thousand and nine to April ninth two thousand nineteen. And whereas Wayne has conducted himself in the office of councilman with great regard to the desires and well-being of his constituents, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri as follows. Section one, that the mayor and the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey an expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful and valuable service rendered to this community. Section two, that the clerk of the city of Fulton, Missouri shall enter this resolution on the journal of the council and shall deliver a duly certified copy wherein to Wayne Shilin.
And if we could have a motion, Mr. Simmons? Oh.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number thirty-three thirty-six at this meeting.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda? Next item on the agenda is resolution thirty-three thirty-seven. Councilman Braun, would you like to present that?
Resolution number thirty-three thirty-seven. Whereas Richard Vaughn has ably, conscientiously served the city of Fulton, Missouri as city council of the third ward from August twenty-fourth two thousand and ten to April ninth of two thousand and nineteen. And whereas Richard Vaughn has conducted himself in the office of city councilman with great regard to the desire and well-being of his constituents. And now therefore it be resolved by the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri as follows. Section one, that the mayor and city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey and express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful, valued service rendered to this community. Section two, that the clerk of the city of Fulton, Missouri shall enter this resolution on the journal of the council and shall deliver a duly certified copy therefore, thereof to Richard Vaughn.
Motion?
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-three thirty-seven.
All in favor?
And everyone, everyone was in favor.
Councilman Moore, would you go ahead and present resolution thirty-three thirty-eight?
Before I read this resolution, notice is left here between Wayne, Richard, and Leroy, the mayor, that we was, it's kind of like losing family members, you know, because we breaking up the council. But Ivan Lee says Leroy's right. We always been... We come to the resolution of what we can live by. So I'm gonna miss Wayne. Wayne's been with me half of my journey in my thirty-five years. And Leroy has been on the council, been mayor, he's been a part of that, and Rick, so to all of you, we promised Leroy we won't go to the door and holler like in the movie Shane and come back. But if you ever get bored, you got, you and three have a free hallway pass to Wander City Hall. So thank you for your service. And to Wayne, wherever he's at, his wife Barb, for what y'all did for first ward was it, y'all both shared it when no one would run, and so kept the seat full. So thank you.
Twenty years, twenty.
Yep. So, resolution thirty-three thirty-eight. Whereas Leroy D. Benton has ably, professionally and conscientiously served the city of Fulton, Missouri for eight years as mayor commencing April the twelfth twenty-eleven and ending April the ninth twenty-nineteen. And whereas Leroy has dutifully demonstrated his deep and genuine respect for the city by the performance of his duties and responsibilities through his dedication to the betterment of Fulton, ensuring a focus on economic development and better quality of life, all citizens. And now and forth, it resolved by the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri as follows. Section one, that the mayor and the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey an expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful and valuable service rendered to this community. Section two, that the clerk of the city of Fulton, Missouri shall enter this resolution on the journal of the council and shall deliver a duly certified copy thereof to Leroy D. Benton.
Motion, please?
Move this for...
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
To at least agree.
Yep, yeah, exactly.
Okay, back to resolutions. Can everybody hear me okay? Not really? Okay, I'll be louder. Thank you. Okay, so we're at resolution thirty-three thirty-nine. Would you, Mrs. Pace Snook, please read resolution thirty-three thirty-nine?
Resolution number thirty-three thirty-nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to apply for and sign all necessary documents in relation to the two thousand nineteen AARP Community Challenge Grant for the installation of one ADA compliant fishing dock. And contingent upon receiving said grant monies, approving the city's in-kind and monetary match. I move that we accept this resolution at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Does everybody know what it is? Is that gonna be, which part is that gonna be?
Veterans.
Veterans part, okay, gotcha.
And if we don't get the grant, then you won't spend the money.
If we don't get the grant, the council will be made aware if we get the grant.
Okay.
And last year, we asked for three of them. Is that correct? Clay? And now we're going for just the one.
So if there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question? Or did we get a motion in that?
We did.
Yes.
We did, okay, cool. So all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Cool. Councilman Stone, would you present resolution thirty-three forty?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number thirty-three forty. A resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Rancis Carpet and Cabinets of Fulton, Missouri for the remodeling of restrooms at Tanglewood Clubhouse and establishing effective date. I move to adopt resolution number thirty-three forty at tonight's meeting.
Second?
Is there any discussion on that?
When we originally put this out, it was for the kitchen and the bathrooms, is that correct?
And behind the bar.
Okay. How mu... Was it crazy, crazy, silly, stupid, high?
I'm sorry, John, what was your question? The total?
Was what we originally put out for bid?
Yeah, it was...
Ridiculously high?
It was way over our budget. I'd say around sixteen or seventeen thousand for the total project.
Sixteen or seventeen?
Yeah, and I'm guessing, I didn't look at that before it came up, but... So we decided to eliminate the kitchen remodeling and the remodeling of the serving area. So we're just gonna do the two restrooms if approved.
The two restrooms are high-traffic areas and they are just...
Right.
Needing attention.
So would it make sense, we have a new man at the club that's taken over, and is there a benefit to us to try to find the additional dollars to get it all done? And is there an advantage to the clubhouse from that?
I think the kitchen area is in need of some work. The floor's in bad shape. It just, it's twenty years old. We try to keep it as clean as we can, but it's had a lot of wear and tear on it. So, yes, would it be beneficial? Will it make us more revenue? Probably not. But it'll keep us where we're in, we're making sure we're meeting all the standards, health standards, health codes. And it'll just be a cleaner situation. We could, I could bring back the other amounts if the council wanted to review them. If we wanted to start with the restrooms, we could bring back the other amounts.
I think I would like to see the rest of it as well.
I think I would like to see the rest of it as well.
Do you want to approve this this evening?
Yes, yeah, oh yeah, I'm good with it.
Have an item of discussion next council meeting on the remainder?
That would be perfect. And Clay? Well, I'll wait. Uh, it's on another note, I'll wait.
Okay.
Just 'cause you were there, I was gonna ask you.
So that's great. Is there any more discussion on the restrooms? If not, I'll ask for the yeses. All in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
No? So that passes. And I think we're wanting to go backwards to the public hearings.
Public hearing, yeah.
So we're definitely past 7:15, let's knock that out. There will be two public hearings on tonight's agenda for the purpose of rezoning an 11.06 acre tract of land known as 2705 Westminster Avenue in Fulton, Missouri from its present zoning of A1 agricultural to M1 industrial, and rezoning a five-acre tract of land known as 2605 Westminster Avenue in Fulton, Missouri from its present zoning of A1 to, A1 agricultural to M1 industrial. The format of the hearing will be as follows. I'll call for three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, then three calls for anyone who wishes to speak in favor. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address. The council will not interact with you during the public hearing, but may choose to do so later in the meeting. The hearing regarding 2705 Westminster Avenue is now declared open. There will be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the matter being discussed. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, second call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition? Third call, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this matter? So moving on, there will be three calls now issued for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing none, second call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor? Third call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? The public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to the next public hearing. Again, the format will be, of the hearing will be as follows, I'll, follows. I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition and three calls for anyone in favor. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address. The council will not interact with you, but may choose to do so later. The hearing regarding 2605 Westminster Avenue is now declared open. There will be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. First call, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, second call, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Third call, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There will now be three calls issued for anyone in favor. First call, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Second call, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Third call, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Sold to the highest bidder. This public hearing is now closed. We'll return to our regular agenda. Okay. We're doing our due diligence. That's a little bit much at times, but. So back to, we're at ordinances, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. So we'll now consider first reading ordinances. Councilwoman Reclu, would you be so kind as to present bill number 1536 by title only?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1536, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance, a tract of land known as 2705 Westminster Avenue in Fulton, Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place bill number 1536 for second reading at the next regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion on this?
Motion was offered by Ronald Danny and seconded by Ken McSwain to approve the zoning change requests made for, made for the tract of land located at 2705 Westminster Avenue and to recommend passage by the city council. Roll call vote of members of the commission was as follow. Les Hudson, yes. Ken McSwain, yes. Joan Barry Morris, yes. Ronald Danny, yes. Jeremy Washington, yes. Louis Beatty, yes. Mike Ible, yes. Motion carried with seven members of the commission voting in favor and one member absent. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. So this is the tract of land that they're wanting to expand precast, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, cool. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
And those opposed, say no. You have a yes. And Mr. Shiverdecker, would you please present bill 1537 by title only?
Yes, sir. Bill number 1537, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance, a tract of land known as 2605 Westminster Avenue in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we advance bill number 1537 for second reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion was offered by Les Hudson and seconded by Ronald Danny to approve the zoning change requests made for the tract of land located at 2605 Westminster Avenue and to recommend passage by the city council. Roll call vote of the members of the commission was as follow. Mike Ible, yes. Les Hudson, yes. Ken McSwain, yes. Joan Barry Morris, yes. Ronald Danny, yes. Jeremy Washington, yes. And Louis Beatty, yes. Motion carried with seven members of the commission voting in favor and one member absent.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That's a yes, thank you. We'll move on to announcements. Madam Clark, please. Oh, wanted to go to second tonight, my bad. Okay. Let's do it.
Right. Bill number 1537, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance, a tract of land known as the 2605 Westminster Avenue in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we advance this for third reading at our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
So we've already heard the discussion and the comments from our zoning board. Is there any more discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? That passes. Do we, that was our third reading, or was that?
Second.
That was our second.
Okay, so we can move on. All right, so announcements, please, Mrs. Clark.
Okay, the 19th Annual Clean Sweep will be Saturday, April 13th. If you have any questions or would like to register, please contact Parks and Recreation. Spring cleanup week will take place April 15th through 19th along the regular pickup routes. And they just ask that there's no construction debris or tires. Lober Municipal Law will be hosting a city officials' training seminar in Jefferson City on Friday, April 26th from 8:30 to 2:00 p.m. Any council members who wish to attend must RSVP with me no later than Monday, the 15th. Our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, April 23rd at 6:30 p.m. The Household Hazardous Waste Center located behind the fire station on Tennyson Road will be open for drop-off on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month through October. To schedule a drop-off, please contact the fire department at 573-592-3150. And last announcement, the City of Centralia will host the next MML Central Division meeting on Wednesday, May 22nd. Council members who wish to attend that must RSVP with the city clerk no later than Tuesday, May 14th.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Are there any other announcements?
Second and fourth Saturday.
For the hazardous waste.
Oh, I'm just so used to Tuesdays. Correction there, it'll be Saturday. Thank you, Mr. Shiverdecker.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I do not have a need for executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So move.